Good. Welcome to the Monday, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four town, Orno Town Council Meeting. I'll start with roll call. We have Councillor Powers, Councillor Baker, Councillor Kenny, Councillor Marks, Councillor, Councillor Bertholz, Councillor Larway, and Councillor Demerit, all present and accounted for. Agenda, we, item two on our agenda is agenda review, possible amendments, amendments. I have a couple, and these are all, we all have to take each of these, we have to take the orders by unanimous consent, right? So we, we'd like to add a town manager appointment for the Public Works Director. Can we just do that by unanimous? Is there any, can we have unanimous consent to add that to our agenda? Okay, that's unanimous. I am going to abstain from the public hearing on the Golden Bean Nutrition Victualers License for a potential personal connection, and I'm going to ask to pull that from the consent agenda, so it can be voted on as a separate item, and Councillor Marks will lead the public hearing on that, on that item. And we have one more? Oh, we needed to pull Order Twenty-four sixty-nine from the consent agenda and add it to new business pending a, to approve it conditionally upon the successful onsite inspection. Okay, so can I get a unanimous consent on that as well? All approved? Yep. Councillor Kenny has a question.
Yeah, I thought, I wanted to pull Twenty-four eighty-four from the consent, consent agenda. I thought we normally did that right at the beginning of the consent agenda. Do we have to do that up front now?
Yeah, this would be when, this is typically when we would, this would be typically where we'd pull something from the consent agenda. So if you want to pull it from the agenda, you could ask, well, actually, anybody can, anyone, including a member of the public, can ask to pull something from the consent.
I know, that's why we just voted, we just voted on the one you just did, but I don't think we have.
We voted to add an agenda item for the order.
And then you just pulled one that we voted on, correct?
Yep, that's how we did it.
We don't have to do that. Do we?
We don't have to vote.
To pull it from a consent agenda.
To pull it from the consent.
So can I ask that Twenty-four eighty-four we pulled from the consent?
Yes, you may. Thanks. So, and I would also like to add in order appointing Councillor Marks as the Chair of the Special Council Committee. This order would be Twenty-four eighty-two. So Shelley, you're suggesting that we pull the order, we have, on our agenda this evening, we have an order establishing a special council committee on nominations, evaluations, and council policies for the twenty-four, twenty-five municipal year. Right now, it's on the consent agenda, which would mean it would be approved as a block. What, we'd like to also, as part of our action this evening, appoint Councillor Marks to be the Chair of that committee, and Shelley, you're suggesting we could do both of those in one order by pulling it from the consent agenda? So I am going to ask that we pull Order Twenty-four eighty-two from the consent agenda, add it to new business, so we can amend it to name Councillor Marks as the Committee Chair, as we've discussed in previous committee meetings, just to keep the public and councillors up to speed on where we are with that. Any questions or concerns? Shelley, anything we needed to vote on that we didn't vote on?
Well, right now I have, right now I have, Councillor Kenny has asked to pull Twenty-four eighty-four, so you'll want to get your consent on that, and then you just introduced the idea of Twenty-four eighty-two being pulled and amended, so that it also appoints Councillor Marks at the same time that it establishes the committee.
Well, I think the procedural question is, councillor, we don't need a vote, anyone, any, a member of the public or council can pull something from the consent agenda per the charter and have it, or have it voted on as a separate item within the context of a committee meeting. So Councillor Kenny doesn't have, doesn't need unanimous consent to pull something from the consent agenda. You'd need to, you'd need unanimous consent to add something to the agenda.
Okay.
As a new order. Is that, that's my understanding what the charter requires. So we don't need, we don't need a vote on Councillor Kenny's request, and I guess the only question is, do we need a, a vote on Twenty-four eighty-two because we intend to treat it as new business and vote and amend it? But it's already on the agenda, so we're not actually adding it to the agenda, it's moving it within the.
Pulling it out, but you're looking to amend it.
Yep. So we don't need a vote for that either. Okay?
Will we need a motion to amend it at the time?
Yes, we will.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Yep.
I apologize for the, the moving and shaking. Anyone else have anything on the agenda review before we move on? Maybe I spoke too soon on how fast this meeting would go, Mitch. I'm sorry. You're right. I'll take a a motion to approve the minutes of April eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, April tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, two sets, April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, and May sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, inclusive of a amendment that the clerk is going to read to us right now. Proposed by Councillor Marks.
So on the minutes that was provided to council of Monday, April eighth of two thousand and twenty-four, Councillor Marks informed me earlier in the day of some clerical changes that would make it easier to understand. So under item two, agenda review, where it talks about adding the new committee, in the first sentence of Council Chair Dan DeBarrett briefed, the language has been changed to say, "The idea of creating such a committee," which actually cleans up the intent of that language. And then if we skip near the second to the last page, it is talking about the order appointing the councillors to chair the following town council committees, and in the overview of the discussion that happened, there was a bit of confusion, and so in order to clarify the historic record for the future, we have added the word "actually" into a sentence that reads, "Councillor Chair Demerit explained that standing committees are actually listed under the Municipal Ordinance Chapter Two, Section Thirty." So we'll be adding the word "actually" to that sentence, and that will clarify the preceding sentence in the minutes. But outside of that, that was all that was noted by council that needed to be changed.
Yeah, Councillor Marks.
I just want to say that Shelley's being really nice to me, because what's actually getting corrected there in the end is that I mistakenly said that that was in the charter, and it's actually not. It's Section Two, Thirty of the ordinances, which Dan got correct, and I just wanted that to be clear for the public. Thanks, Shelley.
Councillor Kenny?
If I have a question about this, I mean, I guess it's probably the time would be when we discuss it now that it's pulled out, correct?
Sure. Okay. If that's okay.
And I think there's one of these in here where I'm named Leo Kenny or something like that, so maybe just a little, little typo. It might have been the twentieth meeting.
Okay, so if it's just like a misspelling grammar.
Yeah.
Clerical, I have the ability to make that switch. So Leo, if you just want to get that to me, I can get that corrected.
Great.
And I apologize.
No worries.
It's a lot of minutes. It's hours and hours of minutes, and I'm relieved that we got this much right, all the things we say over the course of six or eight or ten hours of meetings. So thank you very much for that. Any other changes? Okay, I'll take a motion to, did we already have a motion to approve the minutes?
No.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, and thank you to Shelley and Amanda for the work you do. Next item up is public comments. Do we have any public comments here in the audience? No, Blinda's all set. Pete, do we have anybody online? With their hand raised?
Hands raised online right now.
All right. And next we'll turn to public hearings, and Councillor Marks will chair the public hearing A.
Okay, so I think, Shelley, correct me if I'm wrong, I just need to say we're going to open the hearing on the initial application for a new Victular's License for Golden Bean Nutrition at Five Mill Street, and then I'm going to turn it over to Pat Estes. Thank you, Pat.
Hi, Patrick Estey, Code Enforcement Officer. So staff has recommended approval, paperwork is in, inspections are done, and so we're recommending approval.
Does anyone have questions? Councillor, oh, I'm on. I went on, you turned me off, Dan. He's taking good care of me over there. So do we have any questions from council or from the public about this?
Be curious to know what it is. Sounds exciting.
Can you tell us anything about the nature of this business, Pat?
So this is a bakery, but right now they're not doing any cooking onsite. They plan to in the future, but this is basically a retail store with bakery goods in it that you can go in, sit down. They'd like to have a couple of tables outside, too. And so in the future, they would like to operate the business next door and, and add a kitchen in there in the future.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. So, all right, no more questions, and we will close the public hearing on the Victular's License for Golden Bean Nutrition at Five Mill Street. Thank you very much, Pat.
Thank you, Sarah. Pat, next up is we have a public hearing to consider an initial, nope, initial, yes, we are going to do the public hearing now, and we pulled it from the consent agenda, right? So we're going to have a public hearing to consider an initial application for a new Victular's License food truck for Lola's Main Courses LLC.
So staff is asking for a conditional license based off of myself and life safety, Dave Daniels completing an inspection when they are onsite.
Yep, good. There any comment from members of the public, or? Nope. Councillor Marks?
Pat, I just have a question. When we have a food truck that we're approving, how does that work? Is the food truck licensed in Orno, but it can go anywhere? Or how does that work with a food truck?
So for each property, they have to get a individual permit, and then it's based off of how long do they plan on wanting to stay there? Is it basically three days and under, they can come to the code office and get a permit and operate for that, but if you want to operate more than that, then we ask you to go to planning board and get approval through planning board. And in this particular situation, they are within shoreland zoning, so that's why they had to go to planning board to get approval.
Do we know how many days they're going to be in Orno? I'm excited.
So all I can say is with this Victular's License, they can operate, you know, more than three days in a year.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions? Yep, no public comment, so we will close the public hearing on a new Victular's License for Lola's Main Courses LLC. Next item up on the agenda, item number six is acknowledgement by council members, and I think we're starting, well, we'll start with Councillor Powers or Baker and work our way this way, and we'll start at that side of the chamber next time.
Perfect. Glad I sat here. My acknowledgement is for the Public Works staff, as everybody here has heard me say, one of the best days of the year in Orno is when I've got a huge pile of brush in front of my house, and I come home from work and it's gone. So thanks to the Public Works crew for doing that for everybody. It's a great service.
I'd like to acknowledge the the Police Department for their great work these last few weeks. I, it's, it brings joy to my heart to walk down Main Street and see slow traffic and see the police are out, and thank you, guys. I really appreciate it. If you're watching, Police Department, thank you, thank you.
I'd like to acknowledge Bob Robinson, the passing of Bob Robinson. Bob passed away last week in Fernandina Beach, Florida, where he lived since his retirement, and he spent his entire professional career as an educator in Orno, former teacher, vice principal, principal at the junior high, middle high, and then down at ASA. So he actually was the principal when our Mr. Tom Perry was vice principal. So I just want to acknowledge his passing and his contribution to the town of Orno.
Councillor Marks?
I'd like to acknowledge all of the public and staff and the Advisory Committee and the Tor Committee, who during our onsite finalist day, met our three candidates and provided input to the council and just a lot of work to make that day happen. So thank you to everyone in the community who did that. I also wanted to say thank you at the last potluck to the community members who organized, I'm going to mispronounce, I think it's Kovica, is that right, Matt? Band who came here to teach us dancing and really a lively event, and to the Orno Historical Society who brought us some amazing stories of growing up here in Orno and what childhood in Orno has been like for different people over the years. Thanks.
Great. I would like to add to Sarah's thanks for the search process. Sarah herself, thanks for putting so much work into helping to organize that day, and thanks also to the members of the basin neighborhood who came out for a work day this weekend and cleaned up a lot of trash and got rid of invasive species, and thanks for town staff participating in organizing that as well. I heard it was a really great day.
I'd like to acknowledge all of the many people who are serving on the Comprehensive Plan Committee, coming from diverse backgrounds all around town, who are committed to visioning for our town for this next comprehensive plan. I think it's going to be a really exciting one. Our first meeting happened last month, and looking forward to continuing those and digging into the weeds of municipal zoning and everything else that's, that makes a difference that a lot of people don't realize in the ongoing work that we do and the ongoing work of the town.
Okay, I'd like to pile on to Councillor Baker's comments about Public Works. Participated in No Ticket Day at the landfill this weekend, and it was amazing. Our clerk tells us that over the weekend, eight hundred and fifty dollars in registrations for permit, landfill permits, thirty-four permits came in over the weekend of Oronians. Is that, that's not the right way, that's not what we're going to say. People from Orno, thirty-four, thirty-four permits came in. I went up there six times with brush from my house, brought cookies up to the gentleman working, and I think around my fourth run or so. It was fabulous. I also want to thank Public Works and Parks and Recreation for the attention they've given to the St. Mary's Field, the little field that the, I think generally the little kids use. It was, needed a lot of attention, and over the weekend or early today, it was, it was, all the things were done to it to turn it into, really made a big improvement, make safer for the little kids who are out there trying to catch grounders and fly balls and all the things. So good work on that front. I really appreciate the fast attention of, of our staff to that. Item seven is unfinished business. We have no unfinished business, which is probably not a hundred percent true, but it's under this agenda item, we have no unfinished business. Consent agenda? Can I get a motion to move the consent agenda with the changes we made at the start of the meeting?
So moved?
Okay.
Second.
I'm going to ask for, for the, just for clarity, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, items Twenty-four sixty-seven through Twenty-four eighty-four, excluding orders Twenty-four sixty-eight, Twenty-four sixty-nine, Twenty-four eighty-two, and Twenty-four eighty-four. That was the one, Leo. Yep.
So moved.
Councillor Larway, moved? Councillor Bertholz?
Second.
Seconds? All in favor? It's unanimous. Congratulations, Mitch, for your appointment to the OTO Fiber Corporation, and thank you for your service. Orno thanks you. Okay, next, this is the first one we're going to do? Okay. The first item we're going to do, polls from the consent agenda is order, it's still got the same number, Twenty-four sixty-eight. Order Twenty-four sixty-eight, a Victular's License for Golden Bean. I would take a, as I mentioned at the top, I'm going to abstain on this matter, but I would take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and second. All in favor? That's six in favor with one councillor abstaining, Councillor Demerit. Thank you for that, and I'll take a motion to approve Order Twenty-four sixty-nine with, we need to amend it? Okay, let's take it first to put it on the table, right?
Yep.
Okay. I'll take in a motion to put Order Twenty-four sixty-nine on the table with an amendment to make it, do we need to do two steps or one?
You're going to make it, you're going to amend it conditional upon a successful inspection.
But we just do one order, one vote. We don't have to, okay. I would entertain a motion, thank you, for the conditional approval of a Victular's License for Lola's Food Truck, conditional upon a successful onsite inspection.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? And that passes unanimously, and we look forward to those, however many days they're open, we look forward to it. Next, we will do, we'll take an order, was it still the same number?
Yep.
Order number Twenty-four eighty-two, we'll have a motion to approve the establishment of a special council committee on nominations, evaluations, and council policies for the twenty-four, twenty-five municipal year with the amendment that Councillor Marks is appointed to chair that committee. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, can you, I, for some reason, I remember we just talked, I thought we spoke briefly about it. Did, when was, when did we move it to a consent agenda? Was that in a, a meeting after the April eighth one?
Yeah, in one of the, I mean, six sets of meetings, meeting minutes here, so we moved it, we had it in a committee discussion, and we agreed the extent of the council in that discussion was to move it to the consent agenda.
It was, okay.
But now we pulled it off, so we could amend it and name Sarah the, the Chair.
Got you.
Okay?
Yep, thanks.
Let's proceed then. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Moving right along?
Yep, so now you're going to pick up here.
Twenty-four seventy?
Seventy. Oh, wait, oops, no, I'm sorry. Jumping around on my hinges.
Twenty-four eighty-four?
Yep.
Yep. All right, now, next up is, we need a motion to approve Order Twenty-four eighty-four, which is an order setting the date of the June tenth public hearing at five P M. for a public hearing to consider an amendment to the Town of Orno Code of Ordinances, Chapter Twenty-eight Personnel, Article Four, Working Environment, Section Twenty-eight ninety-one, Potential Liability Claims of Harassment or Discrimination. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second. Is there a discussion?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to publicly state that, you know, I, I advise to, to pull this off because we have, we've been advised by our intern town manager and by our town attorney against adding this amendment to our Code of Ordinances, and based on my experience, I don't think it's, I don't think this amendment is necessary, so I wanted to pull it out because I'm, I'm not going to be in support of this, so that was my reasoning.
All right. I don't want to talk about it now. I want to have a public hearing in a month, and then I want to vote on it again in another, in two months after that, so, yeah, but we can discuss it, absolutely, people can discuss.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that Leo, while Leo's right, that we were initially consulted that way, that there have been subsequent meetings with the town attorney where they indicated that they had no problem with this ordinance as written now, because it has significantly changed from the version that last went to public hearing. So I would really encourage people to read it, come to the public hearing. This second version had a very different response from legal counsel.
Well, I guess I would comment to that, that legal counsel works for the, the board. The initial, we've not heard as a group from the council that he, that they're, that they're suggesting that this, in support of this overall. I understand that the language that is now there has been approved, and I think that's, that's a little bit of a nuanced discussion that, you know, our council's job is to do what we ask essentially. So the initial was that he didn't think this was a good spot for this, so, and we haven't heard as a group anything differently.
Yeah, I think I would be careful to, not to quantify precisely the position of the manager, the attorney, the insurance company, in terms, I think we've gotten some really good input and some, it's made some improvements, but I, I'd be careful not to quantify, qualify anyone unless, unless they give it to us at the time of the, you know, in response to the final language, you know, it's, it's hard to ask people to do that in terms of, you know, precisely tell us what your opinion is of this policy, so, and then they don't have a vote on the council, so that's kind of the, so.
Totally agree. Just wanted to flag for the public that there have been a lot of steps in between, so thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of moving, calling a public hearing on this matter for June tenth? Okay, six in favor? All those opposed? One opposed? And that clears up that one. Thank you. All right, now we are on to Order Twenty-four eighty-four, an order approving the edits, edits made to Section six point three, Public Participation, the Council Practices and Procedures Manual. Can I get an order to put this on the table, a motion?
Dan, before we do that, Shelley, can I just ask, is this a numbering mistake? The last one also said Twenty-four eighty-four. Should this in fact be Twenty-four eighty-five? We seem to have two Twenty-four eighty-fours.
Yeah, I would say that's probably the case.
All right, so now it's Order Twenty-four eighty-five. Could I get a motion to put that on the, a motion to move that?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. It's a, it's the first item under new business?
So under consent, you had Twenty-four eighty-four, which was the one that you pulled, and then when we went to new business, we picked up the same number. It needed to advance one.
Okay, and this is an order approving edits made to Section six point three, Public Participation, the Council Practices and Procedures Manual. This is for background for, by way of the public, we've had discussions in committee meetings about, we don't, we haven't had a, a standing public comment practice, and we've worked as a council to establish a public policy, the public comment policy, as, to expand upon our public comment policy to include protections for, for staff, the naming of staff either supportively or critically in our public comment sections in, in the times when people come to the public and talk about town business. So I would welcome, that's how we got to this point in the conversation, and if the council adopts this, these guidelines this evening, they'll be how we manage comments from the podium as part of, or online, about during our public comment section, or during discussions of any items before the council. Councillor Baker, do you have a question or a comment? Okay, sure.
I would first thank Sarah for, for doing this, putting this together, and say, you know, in a perfect world, we wouldn't need something like this, but given kind of unfortunately where we are right now as a society and some of the things that have happened in, in other towns and, and other school boards, I think that unfortunately, this is a, this is a needed policy to provide guidelines and for both ourselves and, and the public, and I am in support of it.
Yep. Any other comments?
Yeah, I would also thank.
Councillor Kenny, he's recognized for comments.
I would also thank Sarah for a ton of effort in, on this, and, and I do intend to support it. I've definitely been, it's been in a, it's, it's been a tough thing for me to ensure that we are not violating people's First Amendment, and I think I, I'm, I'm supporting it because I definitely agree with the entire spirit of, of what we're trying to accomplish, but I am cognizant that we may be in violation of the First Amendment, and I, I guess I would say, and for the record, this, this does not apply to council, so people can come forward and I guess speak about us directly with our names, but I guess I would say that if, if a member of the public were to come forward with an argument to, to make that case, I am interested in hearing that argument. We, we tried, I think, to make sure we've done as best as possible and had a lot of good consulting and advice from school board members who have done a lot of work on this, so I, I feel good about all of that and appreciate all of that effort, but it is still a bit of concern for me, so I want, but I want to put that out there. Thanks.
Go ahead, Councillor Larway?
Yeah, just for anybody watching, I mean, Dan, you did give a brief summary of the changes being made here, but just to make clear that people are still encouraged, not just allowed, but encouraged to come forward with concerns about running of the town, the work that we do, the work that the town does, and even departments, both positive and negative, but simply that we are, if this passes, we're amending this so that people can't be talking about individual employees in, in any direction, and a big reason that we're doing this is because of the huge potential legal liability of us sort of holding this forum where the staff. Is, you know, un, ostensibly under us slash under the town manager's, um, management, so. I am also interested if people have First Amendment concerns and hearing those, um, but I do intend to support this as well.
Can.
Counsel Powers?
And, and I just wanted to, and I understand both Leo's, um, reservation, but we are working under two amendments that are in, opposed to each other, so if you're interested, I would. Look up, um, both the First Amendment and the right to speak, and also the Fourteenth Amendment and people's right as a worker of a government of privacy, and so. We have two amendments that are in conflict with each other, and that's why we've been working so hard to think this one through.
Counsel Mark.
Um, yes, thank you. I just also wanted to highlight sort of what everyone has said, that Matt has said, we're trying to balance, um, for sure, everybody's First Amendment rights, please come talk to us, please tell us what you think is working well and isn't working well in the town. Please tell us directly what council is and isn't doing well. We're trying to protect the, also the rights of our employees under the Fourteenth Amendment, not to be, um, critiqued in public for their work, and I wanted to point out that on letter E. It is delineated, if you do have a complaint about a specific employee, what you should do. And it does say that, um, for any comments, positive or negative, about a specific employee should be directed via email, phone call, or personal conversation to the town manager. Comments or complaints regarding the town manager should be directed via email, phone call, or personal conversation to the council chair. Whenever possible, it's preferable to put complaints in writing. So there is a, an avenue there for those, we don't wanna shut those down either, we just want to hold them in a forum that is following what the case law is saying, uh, of what we need to do to be, um, following our obligations to our amazing staff. And I also wanted to highlight that, um, for anyone in the public who's looking at the document, the paragraphs added in, I don't know what color they are, they read, I think. Um, whatever color they show, they're on the first page, they were added hopefully to really emphasize that we really want to hear comments, and we really are not trying to shut down comments from the public. And the last thing I wanted to point out is that in the very last section where there's a sample statement about public comment that could appear on each agenda. I had emailed council and staff earlier today with a proposed amendment to that. In the sentence which begins in the middle of the paragraph, on the very left, it starts with comments about specific town of Orno employees. Whether they are positive or negative, it currently says are prohibited during the public comment period. I'm suggesting that we change that to say are prohibited during Orno Town Council meetings. That was an error on my mistake, my part, that I didn't catch that language. That language in the school context works fine because they don't have comments out of any time, other than what's officially called public comment period on their agenda. But we have them at a lot of points, we have them where it's called public comment, we have them during public hearings, we have them all over the place, and it needs to say that it, they would be prohibited during Orno Town Council meetings, in my opinion.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion to make that amendment.
Yep. I would second that motion.
Okay. Any more discussion? And I will say, I, I would add too that, um, people are encouraged to talk about the departments of the town, and we will, you know, we welcome com- uh, comments in public. At our council meetings about how, uh, good or bad, or, you know, areas for improvement, um, about how a d- town department is doing, we just. Will prohibit folks from naming folks as part of those comments, so it'll have to be, you know, speaking about the department and not about. As awkward as that may seem, given that so, uh, the size of some of our departments and how we know people on a first-name basis, and we like to come in and say nice things about people. Um, when they're doing, when they're doing great work, but just to be, to be fair, and, and to protect everyone, um, that's the way we'll proceed if this, if this passes. So, if no more further comment, I would, uh, take first a motion on the amendment offered by Counselor Marx. Did we get a? So it's, the amendment's been moved and seconded, and all those in favor of Counselor Marx's amendment? Is it unanimous? And I'd get a motion on the, uh, now amended, uh. Public comment policy.
So moved.
Moved and.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Berthold. All in favor? That's unanimous? Thank you.
And I'm gonna be ordered twenty-four eighty-six.
Order twenty-four eighty-six. Is an order authorizing the town council chair to execute an employment contract extension with the interim town manager to serve until a permanent town manager is appointed with funds drawn from the approved F Y twenty-four municipal operating budget. Uh, can I get a motion on that?
So moved.
Smoothed by Counsel Kenny.
Seconded.
Kenny and seconded by Counselor Larway. Is there any discussion? Just, and for the, oh.
Could you add fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five, just in case you go over?
I was, yeah.
Like for you to be.
We'll make that in.
In twenty-four.
So moved.
Okay. Moved to make it twenty-four and twenty-five?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counsel Larway? You don't want it, not twenty-six? Yeah. All right, so it's been moved, the, the amendment's been added, okay? And for, um, for F Y twenty-five, and just for the purpose of, uh, the public's consideration and interest in this topic is, we have, you know, we had our town. Manager candidates in town last week, uh, those discussions with the candidates are moving forward, and, but, uh. Cornell Knights, our interim town manager who is, uh, serving us with a great deal of skill and, um. Uh, just, just really been doing a good job for us, um, his contract ends, um, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and, uh, we. May need, we'll may need a little more time, uh, with his services until the, uh, until a, a permanent town manager is, is appointed and, and starts work. So I would first to take a motion, take a vote. If there no further discussion, we'll take an amount on the amendment, um, changing it to F Y twenty-four slash twenty-five, um, all in favor? Yep. And that was unanimous, and I would take a motion on the underlying, um. Order twenty-four eighty-six as amended. All in favor? Yep. And that's unanimous. Now we're on to, again, renumbering, uh, we're on to item twenty-four eighty-seven, order confirming the town manager's appointment of William Cody as the Public Works Director as per Section one-one-three A of the Town Charter. We will first get a motion to put it on the table, and then we'll turn it over to the town manager to present it to the, to the council.
So moved.
Second.
Yep. Moved and seconded, uh, we, I guess the floor is yours, Cornell.
Okay, uh, Bill Cody, uh, currently is the Director of Facilities Maintenance and Transportation for R S U twenty-six, he's been there about three years. Previous to that, he was, uh, Director of Operations for the Callis Regional Hospital. And he worked at the Washington County Community College, uh, Director of Information Technology, Safety and Security Officer. He's worked in the, uh, paper mill in Bayleville as a millwright. He was in the army, so he's a veteran, he's been a cop. He has a, a varied background, uh, we had fifteen applications for the position, uh, the interview panel and I interviewed five. We had two back for review, uh. Viewing the facilities, uh, met with staff, and, uh, then a second interview with the, the, uh, interview panel, and, uh. The interview panel and I agreed that, uh, Bill was the top candidate, so, um, pleased to, uh, appoint him Public Works Director, he would start in a month. If approved.
Yep. Any questions for Cornell or discussion? Yep. All those in favor of the motion? It's unanimous, and we're pleased to welcome, um, Bill to the team.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cornell, for your good work on that, and for everybody who served on the, uh, search committee. Okay, the next item up on our agenda are future agenda items or items of concern. Anyone have anything that they wanna share at this point? I know we've got something that'll come up in the, yeah, the town manager report, do you wanna take that now?
Yeah, I'd gladly do it now.
Could, uh, something that'll come up?
So, uh.
I just want, I did wanna ask about, um, something, I, I don't, item of concern.
Go ahead, did you first? Counsel Kenny?
When or has an ad been placed for higher chief, or can you, can you update on where, where that process is at?
Yeah, he's, he's working until June thirtieth, so, um. It'll be a little bit, um, and since he, uh, announced, he's been on vacation, he comes back tomorrow. Uh, so I'll be talking with him about discussions about the transition. And so I may have a little more information for you at your budget meeting tomorrow where you're discussing public safety.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other items of concerns from counselors before we turn it over to Cornell to talk about future meetings? Yep. Cornell?
Okay. Uh, just wanted to mention that, uh, Zach Turner, uh, the Finance Director is now a Certified Tax Collector and Treasurer. He got a certification through the Maine Municipal Association. I'd like to propose that next Monday's, um, committee's meeting be a special meeting. The, uh, last meeting you approved me, uh, executing a contract with, uh, M J for the Arts Festival. And, uh, I met with her today and Counselor Powers, and, uh, she had a bunch of, uh, questions that I thought. Would be advisable to include in the contract and then have the council approve the contract, we have a standard, uh. Contractors agreement that, that will work, that has an attachment, um, exhibit A, so she's working on exhibit A, and I'd like to, uh. Have you review or approve the, the contract, um, with her, uh, uh, proposal that she wants to move a, move ahead, she's looking at July. The weekend after July fourth, so I couldn't wait until July ten, uh, June tenth, your next regular meeting to get that in, so that's why I'd like to, um, kinda expedite it and have a. Special vote on, on her, uh, order, so if we could make next Monday's a special meeting, that would, um, help move that along. Zach has posted, uh. Counselor Marx has raised a number of questions about the budget, and he's posted responses to your questions, so they're on the Google Drive, um, for you to, to review. And the next budget review is tomorrow at five o'clock.
Okay, Counsel Mark, you had a question?
I did, but thanks to you and thanks to Zach Cornell for that. I was just wondering with the contract with M J Sedlock, um, is the weekend that it's, or the date where the event is happening part of the contract itself, does it state the date we will have the festival, whatever it's called?
She's, she's putting in that, she's putting in that, um, her. Uh, hopeful date is that, and she'd like to have it several days. As opposed to just one day, but if she finds that, uh. The lineup of, uh, people for gigs, uh, isn't work, then she wants to have the flexibility to move it, uh, so it, it is gonna have a range of dates. Her likely date is, is the, uh.
Bless you. That's great and really helpful, and I was also just wondering if we have, um, maybe gotten her in touch with Jeff Owen, who's also planning a multi-day event, I think at the end of July or August regarding, Leo, do you remember the name? Jeff Owen's event that's also at the end of July and into August, or maybe Matt does, it's a multi-sport, I don't know, what is it called, Matt?
It's not, I don't think it has a, a name yet, um, or if it does, I'm unaware of it.
My question was more just, I think it would be wise to get M J and Jeff in touch with each other, because for all I know, it's great to have them on the same weekend, and that would just be more convergence of lots of cool things happening in Orno. But it could very well also be the opposite, where they might talk and think, oh, this isn't gonna work together, and we should make sure they stay separate, so. Can we just make sure we, once the contract is signed, I guess, that we get M J in touch with Jeff, or if it's appropriate before, sometime, so they talk to each other?
Okay. Counsel Powers should take care of that.
I can take care of that, I will make sure that those committee, that those people talk to each other and, and, um, that I can facilitate any of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, oh, Counsel Berthold?
I had another tiny scheduling note, which is, um, for anyone who is interested, normally the D E I B committee meets on, uh, the second Tuesday, um, but tomorrow, because we have, um, a budget workshop, that, uh, meeting has been canceled, so. Uh, I think the committee will convene and decide whether to meet at a different time this month, or whether to just bump to next month, but for those following along, that's a change of schedule.
Apologies to the committee that our budget committee is, our budget work takes so much time. Um, and appreciate their understanding. In terms of the special meeting for May twentieth, that would be, um. Do you need anything from us for that, Cornell? We're just, we're gonna call it that way, so we, we'll call it a special meeting, uh, special council meeting for the May twentieth. We also meet, we also meet on May twenty-first for another council budget workshop, which is Public Works, um, on the twenty-first, so, which is a Tuesday. I wanted, did wanna share, the evening of the twentieth is the night of the R S U twenty-six budget public vote at seven P M., so we'll try and be done, our meetings by five, to the extent that the public or members of the council wanna participate or attend that meeting. Any other item of, items of concern? Okay. Future agenda items. Cornell, do you have anything else in the town manager's report? Any public petitions? No public petitions? That we have no session, executive session scheduled? And we do have, before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I will point out that we have many, uh, things to sign, so people. Don't bar the doors, but don't head, don't run for the doors either, so it gets lots of stuff to sign, but that'll take a motion to adjourn at five forty-seven P M.
Do we usually have a, also a call for public comment in addition to public petitions? I'm not sure, I mean, we might not have anybody, but.
Yep, it would, yeah, have to, any public comment? Anyone online, Matt? Uh, Pete, sorry?
Nope, none online.
Okay.
Okay.
Just figured it was worth, worth asking.
Good catching, we, we moved around a lot tonight, and I do apologize for those who tried to follow along, we did move around a lot, and, um. There's a lot of moving pieces in Orno town business, so, but thank you. And we're passing these down, can I get a motion for adjournment at now five forty-eight?
Motion. Second.
Okay, moved and seconded by the expedited corner of the room. And all in favor?
I wanna have some discussion.
Yeah, it's unanimous, thank you. All right.